We'll start the committee at a whole. Can I get a second to start this meeting?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. What we're here today, on this committee today, is to discuss the circle that's located on Dunham and East, where's the other, East?
Eastwood.
On Eastwood there. Initially, on, just to go a little background, on April 3rd, we had voted it down that we were going to have the city take the circle out, excuse me. I'm in a meeting. We were gonna call, we were gonna have it removed. We were gonna have the engineers come up with a plan and have it removed. Since then, there's been a couple ideas about the circle, and we're gonna discuss them today. But before we discuss them, we had a gentleman that'd like to speak on behalf of this, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Jeff Donahue, come on right up. And thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. All right, my name is Jeff Donahue, and I reside directly in front of the traffic calming triangle, or whatever you're calling it. And the mere size of this thing, it does choke down traffic, I give you that. But nobody slows down. It makes it harder for me to back out of my driveway, and also, it eliminates parking pretty much in front of my house and two other neighbors that are on Eastwood. There's also a stop sign right after my driveway, so if I'm trying to back out, there'll be a car just stop there. Before, there used to be a yield sign before my driveway to turn right onto Eastwood. Since they put the thing in, they put in a five-foot concrete barrier to protect the curbing from the plows, which I was told. It looks like a sidewalk, but it's not intended to be a sidewalk. The curbing is probably five or six inches high. People are using it as a sidewalk. Kids don't know any better, and it's, it's not, um, it's not the greatest place to cross, which anybody would know, that when there's traffic coming from three different directions, you would rather cross where you're only on one street. The grass hasn't been cut, that's in the middle of the triangle, it's a foot and a half, not a foot and a half, I'm sorry, a foot high right now. This, this street Eastwood buses go, city bus and school buses go each way. They squeeze it down in there, but they're not slowing down, they just keep going. They're waiting for somebody else to stop. It's not, it's not a deterrent for people going fast. And it's, it makes it more dangerous, because now they're coming head-on, and it squeezes the lane down from 26 foot to 22 feet. Uh, what else do I got? Oh. This is a side note. November 2nd, I have pictures of the curbing already being installed. November 15th is the engineering report that was sent to the engineering, engineer of the city. November 17th is the police door-to-door report, which the project already had started. The materials had to be ordered already before this even was approved with the studies. And also, before this even came to fruition, I was never even contacted. Nobody knocked on the door and said, "Hey, what do you think about this?" Nothing. It was just done, and one morning I woke up and they were out there breaking the concrete, starting, or the asphalt, and started doing things. So I, my, my proposal, if it's allowed, is to make it much smaller, but the greater aspect would be to have it just removed, and put the lines back in there, and put some crosswalks up the road a little bit. Could've cost a couple feet of concrete on each side of the road, and put some striping in the road so people could cross the road. People walk down the middle of the road, and this doesn't do anything but make it less room for a car to go around them. That's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Today, who I'd like to hear from is our city engineer, Nick Breidenbacher. You came up with, and everybody has a copy of the three plans here that Mr. Breidenbacher's come up with, and Nick, if you'd like to discuss each one. And, and I see you have the price on them and everything, and some diagrams. Go right ahead, Nick.
All right. I want to start by saying these are just historical estimates. They are not actual quotes. So whoever does this work will have to give us a real quote. These are just placemark budgetary numbers at the moment. They could go up, but maybe they could go down too. We're just gonna say they could go up. All right. So option one, since currently we are, you, the council did vote to have it removed, so that is the direction of administration as of this moment. That's option one. Estimating around $16,000 to remove the island, put new mill in, repave it, make it look like it was before. Paint it. Yeah, put the stripes in, right. And option two is to shrink it. That's around $23,000, we would, which is your diagram that you see, the first diagram, option shrink, that give you 30 feet between your driveway and the island, and put the striping around it to where it was originally. So at least it still has that focal point of a choking mechanism, but it will be smaller, for sure.
Where is it right now?
Well...
And if you shrink it, it's gonna be 30, how much, how much you pick up?
It's supposed to be, it's five-foot sidewalk, or, well, it's not a sidewalk, it's a pad of concrete.
So right now, from the side of the road to where it is, it's 25 feet, same?
Yeah, it's supposed to be, yeah.
You pick up five feet.
You'll pick up five feet, yeah.
The, the sidewalk doesn't take up that five feet?
Yeah, it's not sidewalk, it's just the pad, but yeah.
Because it looks like, look in your arrows here, the actual concrete goes 30, but then you got a walking?
That's the new, that's the shrunk version. So the line that you see where the 30 goes to would be the curb. Would be the curbing.
Instead of 25, it goes down to 30, you're saying? So there, there, you're getting five feet? And there's a, and there's a place there where somebody could walk?
No.
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 It's still...
No. That is, that is only just...
It's just, it's just a five-foot curb.
For the road, that's it. That's it. Just the curb.
Okay, I got you.
What do we do, a whole center would be, would be like concrete in there, grass in a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, stone, maybe a tree.
What's the purpose?
It's a good question. I don't know what the original, what's the purpose of it even for?
If it's cheaper to remove it, and it's not to serve no purpose of being small there, what's the purpose of even discussing?
It's just options that we're putting out there. He did say make it smaller would be okay. I don't, I don't, you want my Nick Breidenbacher's opinion?
Yeah.
Make it go away.
There you go. All right, done.
Can I ask why on that?
Hold on, I got one more option, because it addresses all the things.
Please.
There's also option three, which is an ADA walkway, which I do agree, there should be some type of crosswalk of some sort put in this area. You have, there's no access from, we'll call it the Jones side of Eastwood to the United Street side. There, there's no crossing there. You have to go through somebody's driveway. The, the corners are not set up for anybody to walk the sidewalks.
Chief, have, have, it was the other way for many of years, right?
Guys, Frank, I'm gonna let you finish, but I think, raise your hand, and so we, we're all jumping in now, and it's, it's starting to get crazy.
Chief, it's been there forever, right? The other way, without the island?
Yes.
Has there been any incidents on that corner?
I, I just did some quick research before that, I think there was, there was one accident years ago, nothing else, and no, just overall, between before and after, there's been no incidents. Uh, uh, of any significant things. I think there's one minor accident several years ago.
All right, well, just, just raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Katie, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just looking at, well, Nick, I was interested in hearing your thoughts on just remove it completely, and just like, to speak to why on that, but also, I think there is, you know, we're saying like, why not remove it completely, because that's the cheapest option, but I wanna just add that the really cheapest option is to leave it as is. I know people are upset with it being there, but that is also, there's technically four options in my mind. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know it's not really what the rest of the group is thinking, but just wanted it on the record. But Nick, if you can speak to why you thought to remove it completely.
Well, it's the cheapest option.
Well, past the...
Other than leaving it alone. But you guys voted on removal, so at the current status, I have one option, which is to remove it, which is $16,000.
Right. Not for an engineering reason or anything, just like you're being fiscally...
Just, it's just the numbers only, and the fact that it was voted on to be removed. So my direction as administration is to follow what you guys say.
And if it was removed, would it be like white stripe lines in that spot? Would you be able to, or what would you?
I mean, yeah, we could probably paint lines on it, for sure.
The hash marks, like it was before.
The hash marks of what it was, but what, is it really a necessity? That's something we would have to come up with. You guys would have to dictate whether or not.
Thank you.
Bob, you any questions?
No, but...
Joe, I'm sure you've gone up and down the street and discussed it with certain people.
Yes, definitely questions here. So, safety-wise, as is right now, do you, from an engineering standpoint, see any safety concerns with the current size as the structure is right now?
I mean, not adding any less safe conditions than the way it was before, other than maybe, so...
How about the, the shape of it? Are there any areas it's jutting into a certain part of the road that you think it shouldn't be from an engineering standpoint?
I mean, it looks like it's pushed, the whole idea of this island was to reduce traffic or control traffic in some way. Eastwood is the thoroughfare, not Dunham. And they still go just as fast as they've done any other way any other time. Doesn't really choke any traffic. If anything, it hinders movement, yeah. Safety, sure. Now, when you go to cross, you have to step off the, through the grass off the curb. I mean, it's not even really a true crosswalk, but you don't know which way traffic's coming from, either way.
So if it, what was it, option two, to shrink it?
Yeah.
Would that enhance the safety of the area, in your opinion?
My opinion, no, doesn't affect it.
So if you totally removed it under the last option presented, are there any safety ideas in that regard? I'm just trying to go through each and identify the safety aspects of each option.
I think your only safety option is to put some type of walkway, crosswalk on Dunham, behind, yeah, behind it.
Like you said.
Yeah.
And I've heard different numbers. Do we have an exact number on the cost of construction in the first place? I've heard $175,000, I don't know if...
I heard $125,000.
Okay.
Well, I have heard...
No, I've seen on the...
Everybody got $200,000, and this was one of many things, sidewalks and things of other natures that got put in that area, so I don't know exact numbers.
There's $75,000 left in Munis for the six council districts of Arpa. I know the rest of us, some of us, even a little bit above and beyond on, in those regards, but there was about $75,000 left, and it was considered that Celeste's projects didn't finish out. Yeah, so we were...
Yeah, but she got sidewalks in there too, right?
Sure, but yeah, so I didn't know which one that went out of.
So who knows?
Okay. And the, the point I'm getting at, I guess part of the concern is, fiscally, only looking at the cost of removal is, you know, $125 or $175 to construct, and then full-out removal, then you're looking at a total loss of $200K. I mean, if you're just looking at it from a cost point of view. But parking, so...
I think no parking should be...
As of, if it, if it remained, what if, if it were, shrink it? An option one.
Regardless of what happens, I believe Eastwood should have no parking, no matter what. I was there for about an hour, just watching traffic one day, and the mailman was coming by, not to single the mailman out, you gotta get your mail, but as he was parking along the road to deliver mail, cars were going around him. And I know several people have said that use it as a commute road, that they're coming into oncoming traffic because cars are parked. So no matter what, I think no parking should be on Eastwood specifically.
And just to talk about that option one a bit more, the, the shrinking option, just so I know. So the extra five feet you're picking up, you're just removing the portion that looks like a sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay. And then everything else would remain in that option, as-is? So what happens to that curbing? Is it some way to preserve that to bring it in?
Yeah, want to cut it down.
Wouldn't you say cut it?
You've got to cut the length of it, because you're gonna be a little shorter now. Your radiuses will probably have to, will have to get angled.
Okay. Is there any waste from that, waste of, of resources?
Like that, we're gonna, yeah, there was, of course, yeah. Whenever you cut away, I don't know how much, but yeah, there'll be some level of waste.
Is there any other considerations with the option to shrink it? Any other additional signage that's recommended?
I was told there's a plaque or something that was gonna go there.
And the, and the actual island itself, or?
Yeah.
Okay. A question for the deputy chief. With the no parking aspect, police department's position two, no parking, should go along both sides, or the Eastwood side, Eastwood and Dunham?
So I would go, I agree with the engineer, for sure, on the north side, which would be the Eastwood side. I would think there's probably two, I'll call them spaces, but two, two areas of curve where you could park, it probably shouldn't be no parking. On Mr. Donahue's side, it's pretty evident that you can't park there. I don't know if you have to park it, but couldn't park anyways. And then on the, be the, like, southwest side, again, it's pretty clear that you can't park there, but it probably should be delineated with a no parking sign.
And deputy chief, you mentioned, since the island went into place, have, have there been any reports of incidents or accidents that the department's aware of?
Prior or after.
How about recently with the Ridgewood fire, were there any reports of emergency vehicles having difficulty, if they went that route even, to get around, if you're aware?
Nothing I was made aware, nothing I was made aware of. I, I, I just think, so I think the root cause of the problem over there is, is Jones School, and so you see a high volume of traffic in the morning, in the afternoon, which I believe that some neighbors, correlated with speed, which really wasn't the case, it's more of a heavy flow of traffic, early in the day, late at night. And we had the same complaint of parking on Remyton during both those times, so I, I don't know that the, anything could be done over there that, that could rectify the fact that there's a elementary school.
Yeah, and is it, no parking, is it recommended 24/7 no parking, or during school months, during school hours? Has, has anything been looked into beyond just a blanket no parking?
With regards to around the island?
Yes, yeah.
So, I mean, the way that, with, way it is now, I would have to say it should be, it should be all time.
Okay.
Just because of the width would not allow for Carter Park, Carter Pass.
All right, thanks.
Let me go round down a little bit. Breidenbacher? Yeah? First of all, what, what are we losing by not having this island? What was the purse, purpose of putting it in in the first place? Was it to represent something, or for scenery?
I thought it was, what I was told was the Olmstead area, and that's why there may be some plaque or something.
There's that. I, I don't wanna, I would just feel bad chiming in, but...
I don't know, yeah.
It originally started, there's so much flooding in that area, from what I understand, they were looking to do kind of like a rain garden to help absorb some more water, because that's a massive pavement spot, and it seemed like you could also add a traffic island to keep traffic moving. I don't, every time I speak, and then there's laughter, it's just so hard to focus. Yeah, there's actually horrible flooding there. The 2019 flood was atrocious there.
Yeah, but do you see that being a fact?
I'm not saying that's correcting it, I'm just saying, you asked where the idea came from.
There's sewer runoff on both sides of Dunham Road.
So this was just before the, to put in, just for the...
I was gonna, absorb water. I don't know, I, again...
Wait, that actually is a good...
So to take it out is, is less money than to reduce it.
Frank has the floor, Frank's got the floor.
So to take, take it out is less money?
Correct.
And to keep it there, it's a little more money, and keeping it there has no purpose at all for anything? Or am I missing something?
Unless there's a report out there that I did not see or have not been made privy to?
I mean, what purpose is it gonna be, this little island there?
Just to, I, my hope...
If there's a purpose for it being there, I'd consider reducing it. But if there's not a purpose of it being there, and it's cheaper to remove it, and everything was good before it was there, why not do, just go back to the way it was? They're gonna make the ma, the neighbors happy, it seems like. But if there's a purpose, anybody got a purpose of keeping it?
I don't, uh...
Yeah.
I'm, I'm asking, does anybody got a purpose of keeping it?
I don't have one, there's, there's storm sewers... I don't have one. There's, there's storm sewers on Dunham Road, on both sides of the road, so. If it's a water runoff conversation.
Hang on to, hang on to your questions. Are you done?
I, I, I'm just waiting for an answer on this. There are purposes.
Joe, do you, do you have an answer on that?
Well, councilman Beatrice made a point about the sewage. I think they, they did put a sewer in the middle of the island. What, what would happen to that if it's removed?
That's electrical. That's not a sewer. That was for electrical. That was there before.
So there's no drainage in the actual island itself?
There is, it's on Dunham.
Because it is an interesting point, because speaking with some of the residents along Eastwood on separate matters, the first, I think, two, three, four houses have experienced major flooding in that area.
Correct.
And I.
Since then?
Prior.
Yeah.
And, and that was my question about the sewage option, to see, you know, what, if anything, can be done from an engineering standpoint with, with.
Now you're putting sewers in. We're now talking hundreds of thousands.
Because you have, you have one sewer on a little north of the island, up Eastwood?
East, south of the island.
Okay, so south of the island, and then how many are in the?
There's two on Dunham.
Okay. Have you, have the engineering department received any reports of flooding in that area?
If so, because.
Recently?
Not recently.
And I, I just ask because.
Well, there, there's, there's no sewer in there for that, so let's move on.
Since FEMA repairs, like millions went into it and it's helped it extraordinarily.
Katie.
I'm good.
Joe?
Yeah, I just got a couple of things. Mark, I know you're not in, at UPW anymore, but you've been there for years. I was told over the winter, there was problems with ploughs and things were there. Is that true? Do you know that?
Dave Short told me that there was no, no problems whatsoever. No, but it was also a mild winter where the snow wasn't built up against them as well. But as of last year, there was no issues.
And, and the last thing is, I mean, guys, we're all, we're out there, we voted, we said April third to remove this. For some reason, the mayor, there was a, he thought he was going to veto it and come back, but the veto wasn't there. So we obviously were having.
This, the, the, from what I got, and I could be wrong on the show, is that the, the mayor wasn't totally settled on getting rid of it. He thought maybe we can make an adjustment to it. I think that's where it came from.
But it was too late, so the veto never went through.
That is correct.
So our April third vote to remove it is there.
You're, you're absolutely right.
Okay, Joe, you're, you're the district, you're the council person, okay? My, I know me as a council person, when I have people complain, I try to please the people. It's why these guys probably hate me, because I send them a thousand emails when people send me stuff. But my point is, you have a guy over there who lived there, okay, and it totally disrupts his property, okay? We voted to take it out. It's the cheapest way to take it out, in, in my view. I don't want to step on your toes. I think it should go. I mean, I think, I believe you voted to take it down too.
I, I did, and when we voted, as you mentioned, we received the mayor's veto message, I think stating it needs to be substantially modified or removed, at which time the administration requested that the engineering department come up with alternative options, which is why we're here today, to hear the alternative options.
Okay. What, I mean, do you have a problem if we say you're not going to remove it?
Well, I, I, I think before we make a final decision, it has to be. Well, I, I, fair, fair. I feel like the finality of this has to come and it has to be correct. So this has been ongoing since November of last year.
Right.
And regardless of which direction we take, I think it has to be the final aspect of what's done, regardless, so.
Would you say, would you say one thing, anybody that's around that, nobody's affected by that? Do you agree with that?
Well, in terms of back, in terms of backing up, absolutely. And I, I spoke with Mr. Donahue a few times, actually before the November election. When it started to go up, I stopped at his door and we had a conversation about it at that point. And then a few times after, beginning of the year.
The other people who have a view on it, they might like it, they might dislike it. It really doesn't affect them the way it affects them.
Well, that's fair. I would say he's the most affected. There are other considerations, Joe. I mean, there are other residents who, who do like it and residents who want it removed and other residents who are in favor of it, but would support it being smaller. So I mean, these are all the considerations. And, and when I ask about safety and when I ask about the UPD's position on no parking signs and when I ask about these different things, I'm aimed towards safety, not necessarily, because we're never going to have a situation where a hundred percent of residents agree.
Yeah, as far as safety goes, you're hurt. Definitely cheap, safety, another problem.
Well, I think another important aspect of this is, there, again, there's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and seventy-five thousand already in this project. And if it's outright removed, if it's outright removed, what does South Utica get as part of their ARPA projects? Because now you're looking at a situation where people of South Utica, who had no control over this, it, it obviously wouldn't be anyone's fault, any resident's fault.
Do you think if it went to, and I'm just being.
Sure.
So do you think if it went to a ballot, the people in South Utica would vote for an island over there?
We shouldn't, please.
Well, you know, I, well, Joe, I've spoken with people who said, you know what? I wouldn't have been in favor of it going in in the first place, but now that it's there, what are we going to do? Rip it out and cost two hundred thousand dollars? So I mean, there's all, there's positions all across the board. And it's a, it's a tough position because we're not going to come to a resolution where a hundred percent of people agree. And the point is, and I said this before, to maximize safety and maximize, maximize the community's approval of whatever the decision is. I mean, that's what we're getting at here.
Mark? Yeah, so at the end of the day, it needs to be removed. You know, sixteen thousand, I think UPW would probably do it a lot cheaper with their heavy equipment, I'm sure, right? But at the end of the day, it's already been, it's got to be removed. You affect one taxpayer the most. It's not fair to them. You can shrink it all you want. Like you said, we had a mild winter, right? We actually have a good winter again, right? You're going to have snowbanks in the middle where kids are going to be playing on, okay? You see what I mean? You're going to have kids playing on that snowbank in the center island, because all that snow is going to get pushed up in there. Then you're going to lose feet on the curves on Dunham, Eastwood, and all the snow gets pushed up. So at the end of the day, it was done illegally. I don't care if that word, I can use that word, because it was done, not the right way. Because if it came down to the council, council or to the engineer, and the engineer is no longer here, he ran out of here the minute November happened.
November is coming, July.
The whatup, okay? So at the end of the day, it needs to be removed. I go with the engineer, all right? And that's it. I mean, that is it. We argued, nobody voted on this, right? I did listen to Joe. I said it was a pretty good talk. I entertained it. But at the end of the day, I hear the engineer tell me it needs to be removed. It needs to be removed.
Did you say it needs to be removed?
Yeah, yeah, but it needs to be removed because that's what we're on the directive as right now.
Oh, you mean literally because the ordinance was passed? That's it, yeah.
I, I didn't start with that. I didn't, I didn't hurt a good reason why to keep it.
No.
There's not a good reason why to keep it.
I got a couple of questions. I got the floor.
We're just beating this up.
All right, can I have the floor?
Yep.
Thank you. Nick, no matter what on this, I'm looking at, do you plan on putting something together? The administration and putting a crosswalk on, on Dunham there? Is that, is that going to happen either way?
No.
Why not?
Well.
If you, if you need it, why don't we put it there?
Do we have to go to legislation? I can't make that, I can't make that decision.
But you, you.
I mean, I recommend, yeah, I would like to see it. That's what your question is.
Right.
Yeah, I'd love to see. Just, no, a crosswalk, cutting, cutting in the curb, putting an angle slope in, doing a crosswalk, putting the textiles in, legit crosswalk.
And what would that do for us again?
Well, it'll connect, we'll, we'll say the south side of Dunham or Eastwood, Jones School area, it'll connect Jones School to Anita Street.
Okay.
Side, you know, it's a safe place to cross. Right now, there is no safe way, area to cross there. And you're not crossing on Eastwood. That's, that's, you know, a wide, that's the widest part of the road to start with, with the heaviest traffic. The safest place to cross would be on Dunham. And that hour I spent on site, there were kids riding their bikes on Dunham. There were residents walking in the middle of the road.
Do you have an estimate on, just a certain estimate on approximately what a crosswalk would be?
Yeah, seventeen, that's, that's option three, which is the second, second picture.
I don't see, well, you're talking about leaving it alone and just putting a crosswalk.
The crosswalk is on the backside of, on the left side of the.
Yeah, I see that, the bottom, right? And that's, you're saying that.
That's the location.
It'd be about seventeen thousand, you're saying that's the, so the crosswalk itself is seventeen thousand.
And that's leaving it the way it is?
Well, I mean, that's, you remove the island, either way, it doesn't matter.
I think, I think it's, it don't matter what happens, that word should go, we should have one there anyway.
Yeah, I think safety wise, the crosswalk's important, but.
Joe, do you have a problem if, if they removed it and put that crosswalk in there?
Well, I mean, as it, as it currently stands right now, the council did vote to remove it, so that's what's on the books. So I mean, just looking at all of these different options, and what I think I heard, I apologize, from the deputy city engineer, was the crosswalk would be on Dunham Road, across here?
No, yeah.
Right there? Okay, and nothing accro, oh, sorry, there we go. Right in there. And you also mentioned nothing would be across on Eastwood. Okay. Is there a reason?
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's a wider patch of road or it's a faster, lean, uh, traffic volume. This is tucked away, it's a little safer. The hour I spent there, the kids were here. This connects this. Do you want to connect this other side? It's another seventeen thousand. Which, just to be clear, I am limited to what I can do for money for roads and repairs anyways. So these are, numbers are all great, but at the end of the day, any one of these options takes away from potholes, road repairs, sinkholes. I'm, I'm only allowed so much money for this season. Any of these options come from that money.
Right. I, I know that the city just got, I think, what, one point eight million dollars in additional funding, so I'm, I'm sure we could find something for that.
Yeah, we owe, we owe three million that we took from the, the fund.
All right, so.
Did that come out yet?
So, anyways.
Is that out yet?
I was just saying, you know.
So do you, do you, do you have?
I have a question too when we're done.
Okay, so.
It's over. Let it go. Yeah, we're done. We're getting off the subject now here.
I'm, I'm about to talk about crosswalks. It's, it's still on subject. I know people are sick of hearing about it, but we're here. It's, it's just hard because it's like we talk about where's the safest part for a crosswalk and you're bringing up fantastic points. There are a ton of kids over there. I'm walking over there often myself.
And residents that walk.
What?
And there's residents too, just a lot of kids.
And I think it's, you know, it's interesting, it's hard when it's that three-way space. And that's where I was fine with something there. Like I said, I always liked it when you even painted hash marks. But that's all the more reason, I think, I don't see a reason to remove it all completely. Okay, one more down, we're good. So when we're talking about, if we're going to spend money on it and we're looking at this crosswalk option for six thousand more, it's just shrinking it. And I guess at this point, it's like, I hear, at the end of the day, it needs to be removed and I'm not really bringing this up to the floor because I feel like the debate has been exhausted. But for any media listening, that's not actually true. We don't have to have, we don't have to remove it. There are options. And people are saying financially it doesn't make sense, if you listen to everything that, but yeah, they're saying financially it doesn't make sense, so you should just remove it all completely because that's the cheapest. But if you listen to the Q and As that have been going back and forth, it also doesn't make sense to remove it either. And that's just where I'm at. So again, for the media listening, I don't see any necessary reason to remove this and financially, I don't think it's the best use of our dollars, especially as a tech, or as a representative who has one street on the list for paving. So I know we all have streets we need to get paved, but there's my two cents and that is all for me tonight. Thank you.
How many did you have the other four years?
All right, Joe.
With the hospital?
How many did you have the other four years?
I'll count for you and send it right to you.
Bring it to the floor.
I'll, I'll.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not, this, we don't need arguments here, all right? Let's just, let's just move, come on.
I could drive every year too.
Come on.
You literally did.
No, let's not get away with this, all right? Go ahead, Frank.
Okay, nobody's scared, still that, give them a good reason why you should keep it.
That's not how to.
Because we put bad money into it, we should keep it? Is that your reason?
This is, this is a really unsound debate. That's not how, it, it's very, you're not giving me reasons of why we should get rid of it.
Yeah, for the.
Okay, but he, he does back out. There are ways. It has improved things. There are people who do like it, not just liberals, like what was said on the floor, but it, there, there are reasons that people do like it. And I know that there's political divide, but it's just.
It's like the Tennessee street debacle. How much money have you spent on that, the strip?
Hey, I wanted to keep it with how the engineers, the New York State DOT said to keep it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you removed it.
I think this is where, let's just get over.
Let it go.
All right.
Yes, let it go.
Well, we need to come to a bit of a consensus here.
It's already been removed.
There is no consensus.
There is no more consensus. It's already been legislated.
We got to vote on it, I vote no.
Right, okay, vote.
Uh, thank you for coming here. This information is what I've been wanting this entire time and you guys providing the accents and stuff, this is fantastic. Thank you so much for this. And thank you for calling it, Joe.
How was the information before it happened with no safety issues? Is that fantastic, sir?
What?
The information, the information before that said there was no safety issues, was that fantastic?
When they said that.
Because I thought it was great.
When they said, wait.
It said before they put the island in.
There were no safety issues.
No safety issues. So that was great for you?
Right, but that's why I brought up the whole rain garden thing and where that came up from.
All right. Bob, you got the floor?
I have a, I have a question now. If I read this right.
Yep.
It's going to cost sixteen thousand to take it out.
Estimated.
Estimated.
Yes.
And it's going to cost seventeen thousand to put.
ADA crust.
A crosswalk in the practical way.
Yeah, the, the metal textiles are very expensive. They are substantially expensive.
It's going to cost thirty-three thousand, sixteen, because we're just going to remove it.
Right.
You want to make it safe, I think a, a, a crosswalk is, is the way to go. I know it's going to cost seventeen thousand dollars approximately. Eastwood costs twenty or whatever the material and, and labor costs at that time is, but I, I think it's a safe way to go.
What, what's, what's a safe way to go?
Look at the crosswalk, that, that project, you know, when, when I did my ARPA money, I went to the engineering department and, and I spent time with the engineers and I, and I did, I crossed my eyes. Eyes, crossed, dotted my teeth. So I got, what I needed done to make sure it wasn't, ooh.
Sure.
I did the same thing. And, and I'm shutting up. I was just going to say that, Joe. You know, you, you do what you have to do. Uh, this is not my area and I will support Joe Vitar and, and his decision.
He doesn't have one.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I like the crosswalk. I think it's going to be safer and if it's safer for one person, one child, I'm off for it.
So you're going to crosswalk and taking the island out?
Exactly.
There you go.
There you go.
That's where I am. I agree.
Yeah.
Is this taking the island, so step three is taking, is leaving the island?
That is, to your point, now we're talking thirty.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-two thousand.
Option, option three is.
That's why I wanted to ask that question.
This is à la carte, like each item is this price.
So option three is just adding cyclones now.
So how hungry are you?
For the crosswalk now.
But I understood that, 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 you know, I was fortunate to get four street engineers, one, very happy.
Uh, what, what, I just, okay, just one more question I got for Ed. Ed, is, is there any plans where we could, so you're saying that the traffic isn't speeding there, it's just, it's just a volume issue?
So that's my, my opinion, and I live there. My kid is one of the kids that plays there. Um, there's a high volume of traffic, particularly in the morning when school starts, in the afternoon when school lets out. Now, in between, Eastwood is also probably the busiest road in Ridgewood. But the way the roads are designed, I, I think, and I don't want to criticize neighbors, but I think we see that much volume of traffic, not necessarily, the speed limit's thirty miles an hour. Not necessarily going above thirty miles an hour. It's just a lot of cars traveling. And we get that to play a lot. We do speed surveys, but what we find is it's more of a volume issue than a speed issue.
Do you, is, is this, you live there, is, is this? Do you, is, is this, you live there, is, is this circle that we're talking about, this island, is it, is, is it causing any benefit or negative? Have you seen a benefit from it?
I would say, no, it's, to me, it's neutral, but I also don't live right directly behind it.
That's the guy that lives there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
He would know.
My, my, okay, go ahead.
Just one question, Deputy Chief, can I ask you one question? So, we talked about the morning, and we talked about the, when schools get out.
Sure.
Is it not true that we have that area, every school, how long, where we are at JFK, what happens over there?
The problem, and I've said this multiple times, the problem we have is these schools were built as neighborhood schools, they resign for kids in the neighborhood, walk in the school.
You're talking about Tom, Ed, Jeff, and John, or her, or two?
Every, every neighborhood elementary school has a similar issue.
It's the same time, it's the morning and in the afternoon.
It's the volume of cars that's parking around the school.
And I think that is one of the reasons, we lowered the speed limits to all, but say the same thing for all schools.
So, speed zones are within the vicinity of the school, the speed zone doesn't extend to that portion of each of them?
No, no, I know, but I'm just saying, the problem, the problem where you have over the next street, is probably the same problem I have on Summer Terrace and down Deerfield Drive East. When they come on, the people that are going east, go one way, they go down Deerfield Drive East, the other people go down Summer Terrace, or one of those roads, and those are the people that call and say there's cars speeding down my road.
Correct.
Correct.
Alright, so, my, my suggestion would be, get rid of the island, put in a crosswalk. Joe, my suggestion would, to you, Mr. Beattier, would be, go with getting rid of the island and putting in legislation for that crosswalk, and getting the numbers together. That's your area there.
Well, and, and let's just be clear about why we're here today. When we voted on this, and a veto message came in, and a request to discuss alternate options, and giving the engineering department to discuss those alternate options, regardless if the result was the same, this is part of the process that I personally wanted to ensure took place. Again, regardless of the result, and that's why we're here, to discuss this with engineering, UPD, talk about the DPW, snow plowing aspects, I mean, I think this is important. So, again, regardless of the result, this is part of the process that I at least feel should have taken place months ago. It's just my personal opinion, but.
And I appreciate that.
Yep.
Alright.
Agreed.
I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned.
I'm making a motion, thank you.
Alright, thank you.